Good evening. It's six o'clock on Tuesday. This is our regularly scheduled city council meeting, Tuesday, April the 12th, 2022, 6:00 PM. We do have a quorum, so I will call this to order and I will ask you to stand. The person that's bringing our invocation tonight is Graham Hale. He's pastor of Fellowship Bible Church. So if you'll come forward, bless us, and then we will say the pledges. Thank you, Graham.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we praise you for the gift of community that you have given us. You have created us to live in community with you and in community with one another. And Father, we praise you for this community, the city of Jacksonville, and the friends and family that we live with and live in community with. We thank you for them. We pray your blessings upon them. Father, thank you for the men and women that you have appointed in this council who just have a desire for to make decisions for the betterment of this community. And thank you for how you have uniquely gifted them and appointed them to do just that. And so, Father, we lift them up to you. We pray that you would guide and direct them in the decisions that are made and be with the people here as well as they share their concerns. And Father, as a minister of the gospel, I just want to personally pray that through the decisions made, that you would just set the stage for your gospel to spread and your kingdom to advance through your church for our joy and for your glory in Jesus' name. I pray these things. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a few special presentations. We'll start with the employer of the month, presented by JEDCO President Shane Pace. Shane?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. This evening, we will be presenting the employer of the month to Zyklus Heat Transfer. I do have Corey Simmons and some of his staff with us today, so I'd like to call him up for just a moment. So, just to tell you guys a little bit about Zyklus Heat Transfer, Corey can speak to some additional information, but they've been in our community for a little over 10 years. Back in 2018, they were purchased or acquired by the Louve A Group. It's an Italian group. And with that, they started the expansion of their business here in Jacksonville. They currently have about 120 employees, so they're a really good employer in the community. They have a new facility that they constructed a couple of years ago now off of the Loop 456. It's about 50,000 square feet, and they plan to expand that to about 200,000 square feet. So, they're doing a lot of good things here. They've been a really good asset to our community. I'm just really happy to continue working with them and all that they're doing in the community. Just thank you guys for being here. So, thank you.
Thanks for the work. Really appreciate it.
Our next item is the Sesquicentennial Committee Presentation. I'm not sure who's going to... Oh, Dr. Sam Hopkins is going to present that, so.
Mr. Mayor and distinguished council members, first, I want to thank you for having appointed such brilliant workaholics for this committee. All I have to do is preside and turn them loose. I'm not exaggerating. You can get some people who like to talk. These people walk the talk, and you're going to find out soon enough. There are a couple of things coming up, one of which, of course, will be the opening of the time capsule that was planted in 1972 out here in a corner by the War Memorial, and it will be opened at precisely 11:00 on the May 11th, which is the date that it was buried. Public events. We're very curious to see how well the items have survived through the years. In the meantime, we've been doing research on getting a container that will survive to the bicentennial, which we plan to have planted on New Year's Eve at precisely 1:50 PM in honor of our Sesquicentennial. Somebody back there thought of that. Let me introduce some of the members of the committee to you that you have appointed. I'll start with Charlie Esco, who I'm madly in love with. Johnny Helm, who's the musician in our group. He won't talk to you, but if you want him to be singing a song, I'll get him to get his guitar. Then Deborah Burkett, who is the premier historian around here. She's got something to tell you in just a minute. And Kathleen Stanfeld. Now, we're getting to the part that will probably tell you the most because she and Kathy DeVeige have a three-minute show and tell up here about what's going to happen. The first event I've already told you about, which is the time capsule. The big event will be in October, starting on the 15th, and with the rally, the big finish, the 22nd, and there'll be things all that week. One of the first events will be a walk-through history out at our city cemetery, and Deborah Burkett is going to tell you about that. And then, right behind her, Kathleen and Cassie are going to do show and tell, and we're done.
Hello. I want to, as Sam said, talk a little bit about the walk-through history event. That's going to be Sunday afternoon, October 16th, 2:00 to 4:00 PM, at the Old City Cemetery on Kickapoo Street. Ten citizens from Jacksonville will represent historic figures buried there. These 10 people will be dressed in period costumes, and some people in this room have already said they're going to be those historic figures. Are you laughing, Mayor Goran?
Yeah. And you spoke correctly. I was told I would wear that.
We thank you for participating. We do. We look forward to your costume as well. And these 10 people dressed in historic costume will tell the stories of those 10 historic figures in our Jacksonville history. Then after... Well, we have a large tent that's going to be erected with chairs in the cemetery for this special walk-through history. After the program under the tent, those people who choose to do so, and we encourage this, walk or drive through the cemetery and see those historic grave sites, and they would be designated by a flag and a staff. So, that would be after their special program. Everybody who attends this event will get a printed program of these histories and a map to also guide them through the cemetery. In closing, I want to personally thank the city for all they've done to help with this event because in preparation for this big day on October 16th, volunteers have been cleaning the tombstones at the Old City Cemetery every second and third Saturday, 8:30 to 11:00. We want to thank the men who keep the cemetery moat. It looks beautiful. And we want to thank the city for the water truck they've placed every second and third Saturday because we need lots of water to clean those stones. Thank you.
Kathleen, did you want this?
Oh, clicker. Which one's next?
Right.
You want me to do that for you?
Okay, so, good evening. We've already done all that. Okay, so, I'm here to represent the Jacksonville Texas Sesquicentennial Celebration Planning Committee, which is a lot of words. Basically, it means we're going to have a party, okay? So, we got the part where we get to plan the party for October 22nd, and it's been amazing. And the ideas that are coming out of the committee and the things that we're cooking up are really fun for Jacksonville. City manager's helping us a lot. Preliminary plans are coming together. I think we've been at this for almost a year. Sam, when we convened? When was our first meeting?
A year ago.
A year ago, okay. As Deborah said, next month, or as Sam said, next month on May 11th, we'll enter the time capsule. One thing that I want to make y'all aware of is, we have a gentleman here in Jacksonville who's doing some streaming radio broadcasts, and he's actually recorded a commercial and is playing it, publicizing it, and he's not charging anything because he's so excited. And we think that's pretty cool. But back in 1972, part of the city council was wearing pants like that, and we celebrated the centennial. Tim, do you remember yours?
I do.
Uh-huh. We're hopeful when we get ready on May 11th that we can do something a little more modern and livestream the unveiling of the contents. And Sam's right. I mean, we might as well drop it on New Year's Eve, so that's going to happen, too. It'll be fun. In the meantime, you guys have to start thinking and helping and planning what goes in it this time to show people in 50 and 100 years. It's really important what we put in there. So, everybody needs to think, and everybody needs to give us ideas about what they think's appropriate for the time capsule. But I want to tell you about the big party. Public service announcement, every one of you, all, yeah, all y'all, you have to reach out. You have to tell family. You have to tell friends. You have to tell classmates. You have to broadcast this. This isn't about drawing in tourism so much as it is inviting everyone. We want you to come home. We want you to come downtown, and we're all going to come together. So, you have to help us evangelize it. People that you know that used to live here need to know that this is happening that day. If you will, it's going to be more of a street reunion than a tomato fest. I don't know how else to put that, really. We'll begin our celebration in 1972, as we did in 1972. Yours truly actually dawned the dress of the day, which was... I skipped one. Where's my bicycle? Oh. We all dressed up. We rode in front of the parade. We actually rode down South Jackson Street, turned on Highway 79, and then turned towards downtown. At this point, and tonight officially, we would like to ask all the children who participated in the 1972 parade to be our grand marshals and walk ahead of the children in this parade. Afterwards, I hope we'll be able to stage a photograph of the two groups on the tomato bowl steps or somewhere close by and bury that photograph in the time capsule so that in 50 years, all those grown-up kids will know they've got to walk in the parade, too. There are many plans underway, though. There'll be an emphasis on our downtown businesses and eateries during the day. People will be encouraged to come and spend the entire day, find a great spot to visit and reminisce. If Saturday, unless Saturday's barbecue fest is any indication, everybody's going to love the vibe of this birthday party. It's going to be a lot of fun. The kids block, the Gowanus Chapter has graciously agreed to spearhead that. It's going to be a blast. If somebody had told me when I was 11 years old that I could take a bucket of sidewalk chalk and go down Commerce Street, I'd have been there all day. I'd have had a blast. Adults are going to find fun, too. There are going to be contests and displays. There's going to be food and drink, food trucks, lots of things from our downtown people. As a matter of fact, Randy, I just talked to Rhonda Parker the other day. She teaches our kids, GT kids, first through fourth grade. She informed me that every child in JISD that's in the GT program, first through fourth grade, can appropriately pronounce the word Sesquicentennial.
I did pretty good.
You did real good. You did. And, oh, that brings me to music. I'm not clicking very good. There's downtown. That Saturday, that was fun. I don't know about that. Okay. Okay. Anyhow, last but not least, Randy, the committee, and it's these people right here, and we vote. So, remember, we vote. Where'd it go? Okay, there. See all those people? They want to formally invite you to reach out to everybody in Plain folks. We have to have you guys kick off this party.
Wow, okay.
And so, you're on the hook, dude. You got to do it. And I just want to say thanks to y'all. This is a lot different than it was in 1972. I've shown you the cast of characters from the pageant. I remember my grandmother on a phone tree. She spent... Mindy's mom did it. Rob, I'm sure your grandmother did it at the restaurant. But everybody had lists of people they had to contact and tell them things almost every day. I'm so thankful for Daniel and for all the help that we've gotten and all the communication we've had so far. We've spent a year kind of quiet, but it's fixing to get real loud and real fun, and I hope y'all are ready.
Thank you. Super. Our next item is a reading of a proclamation by Governor Abbott declaring April 10 through 16, 2022, as a public safety telecommunications week. Governor Abbott called me this morning, said he could not be here tonight, and asked me to read it in his stead. So, that's what I'll do. I think we have three.
No, more.
The whole row. Y'all want to come up? Yeah, come up. Yeah. I can read better with a crowd, you know? So.
Who's right in the place?
But this is from the State of Texas Officer, Office of the Governor. In Texas, public safety telecommunicators act as our unseen first responders, serving our communities and helping save lives every day. These professionals, which include 911 operators, dispatchers, and other highly-trained communications specialists, answer calls for help and address the emergent needs of callers according to the specific challenges raised by any given emergency. They process the situation, respond rapidly, and often creatively to reassure frightened, upset, and confused callers while at the same time maintaining the calm, professional, and disciplined demeanor that handling an emergency 911 call requires. Public safety telecommunicators have remained unwavering in their dedication to providing essential services to Texans in need, always adapting to an evolving emergency response field. With almost 600 public safety answering points, where over 4,000 telecommunicators answer 911 calls, Texas is well equipped with the best professionals who can provide critical assistance for Texans in times of emergencies. The Commission on State Emergency Communications work with telecommunicators and local and state governments to ensure Texans have a reliable access to emergency telecommunications services. Each year, the Commission dedicates a week in April for the Awareness Campaign, which highlights the many contributions and achievements of public safety telecommunicators and their importance to this public safety framework of the Lone Star State. At this time, I encourage all Texans to learn more about the vital role these professionals play in our everyday lives and to extend their appreciation to all public safety telecommunicators. Their strength and expertise in times of crisis ensures Texans receive the help they need when they need it the most. Therefore, I, Greg Abbott, Governor of Texas, do hereby proclaim April 10th through the 16th, 2022, to be Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. In Texas, and urge the appropriate recognition whereof, an official recognition whereof, I firmly affix my signature to this the 25th day of February, 2022, signed by our Governor Greg Abbott. In front of that. All righty. Thank you, guys, very much. Our next item is citizen participation. This is where we set aside some time each month to listen to the concerns of our citizens. It gives you about three minutes to come and talk about a complaint, talk about something you like. So, we have one that has signed up tonight. It's Joey Harrington. So, if you'll come to the podium, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to about three minutes.
I wouldn't have no problem with that.
Okay.
How are y'all doing tonight?
Thank you. Very good.
My name's Joey Harrington. I live on 404 Angelina Street here in Jacksonville. And I'm sorry to say, but I'm complaining about a dog that barks in a house behind us, in a yard behind us, and it's been doing it for the last four years. And, you know, I just, I don't know what else to do. I mean, we've tried speaking to the people and everything else, and it just, you know, I don't... Come to y'all to find out what we need to do to start maybe trying to get it rectified.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions or anything?
No, I appreciate you coming, though. It's been going on a while, and we understand that, so.
Almost four years.
Hopefully, we'll have a solution for it.
Yeah, all right.
Thanks for coming.
Thank y'all very much.
You bet. Thanks, Joey. Would anybody else like to speak that didn't fill out a sheet? Okay. Our next item, number seven, is our consent agenda. Items under this consent agenda require little or no deliberations by the council. It's approving the minutes of the prior meeting, reappoint Mr. Aragon to the access board, improvement of the investment policy, and street closure for the tomato fest. So, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilman Tim McRae.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number eight is to talk about and vote on any action out of the executive session. I think we had our executive session prior to our meeting, and I think we have two.
We do.
Motion.
Mr. Mayor, first motion is to approve the lease of the former police station to Cherokee County. The address is 210 West Larissa.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gallock.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Rob Goen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries.
Okay, one more. Second one that came out of executive session is to authorize the city manager to enter into a lease of four acres to Republic Services.
Very good. So, we have a motion by, again, Councilman Mindy Gallock.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tim McRae. Any discussion on that item? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. Item number nine is to discuss and consider with possible action an ordinance regarding on-site sewer facilities. Mr. James?
Yes, Mayor, City Council. This is really just a cleanup item. On-site sewer facilities is a nice way of saying septic systems, which are only allowed in the city in very rare instances of the city being unable to provide access to a sewer main and also dependent on the size of the lot. This came to our attention with TCEQ. We no longer have the necessary certified staff to do these inspections, but it's very common and as done by the county to outsource these inspections because they happen so rarely. So, this is merely a cleanup item in the ordinance to reference my ability to have third-party inspections performed as necessary.
Okay. We've heard that description. I'll entertain a motion on that.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Hubert Robinson.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tim McRae. Any discussion needed? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 10 is to discuss and consider with possible action a resolution delaying the CenterPoint grip rate increase for 45 days.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, as you're aware, this seems to be something we do on an annual basis, as many cities do, but essentially, we're delaying the increased rates as passed through by CenterPoint as part of their gas reliability infrastructure program. It allows additional due diligence to be done to make sure that they're not raising their rates beyond their allowable rate of return. So, again, we're just not accepting their rate increase at this time, and it'll come before you at a future date.
Okay. We've heard that, and I'll entertain a motion on that item.
I make a motion. We approve the resolution delaying the CenterPoint grip rate increase by 45 days.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gallock.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Rob Goen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 11 is to discuss and consider with possible action a resolution approving the application for a Texas Water Development Board loan.
Yes, Mayor, City Council. This project's been in the works for quite some time, but this is seeking city council approval to formally finalize the process for a Texas Water Development Board loan. It's a loan in the amount of $5.919 million. We would expect to close on the loan later this summer. Terms and interest rates yet to be determined, but we expect terms to be in the neighborhood of 20 years and certainly an attractive interest rate for the city. This would actually be for the extension of a sanitary sewer main stemming there from Bolton Street or South Bolton Street, just south of Tina East, in the neighborhood, if you will, of the high school over there off of Corinth Road. It's about a 9,000-foot linear foot project, so, you know, shy of two miles, but quite an extensive project. It would be to replace an existing 18-inch concrete pipe with 18-24-inch PVC. You know, we do have some surcharging issues in these areas, and this would certainly address that. There would also be the replacement of the lakeshore lift station and an extension of the force main into this gravity line as part of the project. We have been formally approved for this. This is just a step toward finalizing this project, and Stokes and Associates has been working on the design. So, this is a preliminary layout pending tonight's action. We'll go to full plans and look to close on this loan later this summer.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we pass a resolution allowing the city to make application for a Texas Water Development Board loan.
Okay.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilman Tim McRae, a second by Mayor Pro Tim, Rob Goen. Any discussion?
Is this your project from now, or how long?
There on the screen, it looks like design phase would be completed May of 2023 with construction, then slated to start late 2023 or mid to late summer 2023, and it'd be about a two-year construction project. This'll be a big endeavor.
For 9,000 feet. That's crazy.
Yeah. Well, I think this will help that issue of South Bolton Street.
It'll drain the whole west side, yeah.
Good project. If no other discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 12 is to discuss and consider with possible action a grant contract with TCEQ for improvements to Lake Acker.
Yes, Mayor, City Council. This is accepting a grant contract with the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality for a planning study to be conducted at Lake Acker. Lake Acker is an integral part of our surface water treatment operations. It allows us to reduce the amount of water taken or necessary from Lake Jacksonville. In fact, it's about a six-to-nine month water supply for the city, and this grant from TCEQ will provide about $58,000 of funding for the city to conduct a study of the lake. The next item on the agenda is related to this as well. But, long story short, when you contain and dam up a body of water, you got to make sure the dam's safe and that the body of water's secure. So, this is all taking steps toward that.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I'll move that we accept a grant contract with TCEQ for the improvements to Lake Acker.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Tim McRae.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion? And I think we've been kind of working on this for quite some time, too.
You have. You have.
For fixing that dam. Any discussion?
We need to check the fish level in that lake.
Yes, we do. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 13 is to discuss and consider with possible action a professional service contract with Auckland Consulting for design work at Lake Acker.
Yes, Mayor, City Council. This item is particularly tied to the prior item. The 89450 related to that TCEQ grant, again, $58,000 coming from TCEQ, is to fund services from Auckland Consulting. As a professional service provider and an engineer, there's no need to bid out this service procurement. The deliverable on this will actually be construction plans after the assessment to the dam. So, any improvements that the engineer and the geotechnical... So any improvements that the engineer and the geotechnical reporting would indicate as recommended, basically, we'll have a plan set to bid that construction out to ensure the future of Lake Acker.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion we approve a professional services contract with Auckland Consulting for design work at Lake Acker.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Galloch.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tim McRae. Any discussion? Do we have any idea what it potentially might cost?
We have an idea. Mr. Tainter, this is a local company, and I do want to commend Mr. Tainter. He was actually integral in allowing us to secure this grant.
Right.
For the future of Lake Acker, but rough numbers. He thinks it could be a $2 million project.
Really?
Yeah.
But I think you told us it gives us a 65-day water supply, not?
No, it's closer to a six-to-nine-month water supply, depending on drought conditions and things of that nature. But the other good thing it does is it sits at a higher surface elevation than does the surface water treatment plant. So in times of power outage, we're able to gravity flow water to the plant for treatment.
I see.
And a new well is how much?
Oh, it depends on.
Ish.
Yeah, a lot.
But. Seven, eight million.
Depends on if you had a dry hole.
Five.
Five or six.
Five million.
And this is the lake we have.
Beautiful. Right.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 14 is to discuss and consider with possible action granting Encore six easements to assist in the widening of Highway 175.
Yes, so Mayor, City Council, 175 is on its way of being a four-lane highway all the way from downtown Dallas to Jacksonville, which is certainly a great thing for the community. As part of that, some utility lines need to be relocated. Of course, inside the city limits, Encore has the ability to work within our right-of-way. However, the easements they're looking to procure from the city at this time lie outside of our city limits. They're generally indicated there on that exhibit. Just plotted some points today, but you see that they're all pretty much consolidated there in the area just north of Lake Acker at 175, and then one east, a little bit closer to, I believe that's West Side Elementary. They would all be 15 feet wide, and they range anywhere from 10 to 500 feet in length, and the city would be compensated $2,200 for this.
Okay. We've heard that. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant Encore the six easements they request and property owned by the city of Jacksonville outside of the city of Jacksonville for the widening of Highway 175.
We have a motion by Councilman Tim McRae. Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. Item number 15 is to discuss and consider with possible action awarding the bid on well number one rehabilitation.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, sorry, that's a little bit small on the screen tonight, but I want to commend our staff in public community services as well as finance. We did bid this project twice to make sure that we got competitive bids. We received four bids that were open last Friday. This is for the replacement of the pump at well number one. Well number one is located nearest the Beaumont and Canada intersection. We're making a recommendation to award the bid to Weisinger, Inc. We do have familiarization with the company. They were also the low bidder and scored the highest in our matrix for determining the bidder of best value to the city.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion we award the bid on well number one rehab to Weisinger, Inc.
Very good. We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Galloch.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tim McRae. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 16 is to discuss and consider with possible action the purchase of fire department bunker gear from NAFCO via buy board contract 603-20 for an amount not to exceed $102,000.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, full disclosure, this item was not on Thursday's workshop. In a perfect world, this probably would have been an FY23 budget item, but unfortunately, supply chain issues and lag time and lead time on orders these days, this particular bunker gear is about six-to-seven-month lead time, so we're not going to get it by the end of the year unless we order soon. Bunker gear by state laws mandated only have a life of 10 years. Chemicals build up in bunker gear, and it loses its ability to protect firefighters. So this is for about 30 sets of pants, jackets, the liner worn under the helmet, I believe the helmet and the boots for firefighters.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve the purchase of fire department bunker gear from NAFCO or NAF...how did you say it? Buy board, buy their buy board, in the amount not to exceed $102,000.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tim McRae.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Rob Goen. Any discussion? That screams a long way away. Is that Keith Fortner in that bunker? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. All right, that concludes our action items. Open forum for mayor and council. Does anybody have something they'd like to say? I attended the barbecue cook-off on Saturday. It was a wonderful event, first time. Dylan Rodriguez from Texas National Bank, I think he was the brainchild behind that thing, and I thought it was a great first start. I don't, I never heard an official count, but it looked like there was quite...
About 200 people.
200 people? Well, that's great. And I think they made...
Eighty-five hundred.
Eighty-five hundred bucks, so I think that's great. So look forward to continuing to expand that each year. It was great, good time. Sad by all. Anybody else have anything they want to say? If not, we'll go to item number 18. Discuss and consider with possible action adopting an organizational strategy map.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, as you're aware, we did hold a full-day visioning session facilitated by Core Insights on February 24. I appreciated your time there. We spent the morning with our leadership, our executive leadership team comprised of our department heads, and then we spent the afternoon just strictly with the consultant and went through a myriad of different exercises, and then we're ultimately provided a report by the consultant, Brian Brandt of Core Insights. Staff's taken the report and boiled it down into what we're calling a strategy map, much easier to kind of summarize the 16-or-so-page report into something that we can all look at regularly to remind ourselves of the vision of our city and kind of the future of our city. I don't want to belabor any points tonight, but it's going to really serve as a tool to lead staff through the budget process, and we think we've done a good job at capturing everything we heard, both written and verbalized at the meeting. I do want to call attention to the beliefs that staff derived. Those weren't heavily discussed, but certainly those were the themes that we heard on February 24, that people are the priority. That starts with our citizens and our staff. Nothing is delivered from the service without staff, and everything we do is for the citizens and visitors of Jacksonville. We also believe that trust is earned. Every decision we make at a staff level and at a council level is an opportunity to build trust within this community. Collaboration leads to progress. Oftentimes, that requires compromise, and we're certainly on a phenomenal trajectory in Jacksonville. Continuous incremental improvement. You know, there's a lot of things that many of our citizens and then our council members want to see change and want to see improve. Many of those things didn't get how they are overnight, and they're not, and we're not going to pull away from them overnight either. But as we lead our staff and work with our boards, committees, and we'll talk about some action recently taken by one of those, you know, if we're always moving forward, if we're always moving in the right direction, if we can measure that, we're not going to be slipping. And then we believe in accessible and transparent governance. So we want to make sure we have two-way communication in our communication styles and that we put things out, whether it be on social media or on the website or have face-to-face meetings here at City Hall. We did identify some strengths and some opportunities, and basically then we derive some commitments, that citizens are first, that we need to strengthen our neighborhoods, that doesn't necessarily start with code compliance and updates, but that's a heck of a place to dig our heels in and get to work. We believe in our park system and the opportunities that that affords the future generations and really everyone here in town. The community policing and crime prevention need to be a priority in town, and that we need to work to preserve and revitalize our existing neighborhoods. The center commitment there, manage the business, that really speaks to being wise stewards of the public money, to make sure that we maintain our bond ratings and that we, you know, budget, we budget to meet the needs of this community. To focus on infrastructure, we look forward to working with the council to develop a comprehensive and hopefully a five-year capital improvement program. It'll be rolling. Things are always changing. Different grants are constantly becoming available, but we certainly need to plan for some of those high-capital projects. We just saw a $5.9 million sewer line tonight, and there's a lot of projects in line behind those. And then planning and preparedness, certainly want to look at making sure we're ready for emergencies, that we're working in partnership with JEDCO to diversify the tax base and move the tax burden off of rooftops, and that we're doing comprehensive planning for the future, so.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion that we adopt that.
I'll make a motion we adopt that plan.
Very good.
Or map, strategy map.
Got a motion by Councilman Tim McRae, a second by Mayor Pro Tim, Rob Goen. Any discussion? It was a great visioning session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Our next item is the city measures report.
Yeah, a couple items I'd like to call everyone's attention to. If you didn't see on Facebook, back on April 5, so just a few days ago, zoning board of adjustment met related to the condemnation and demolition orders on nine different properties throughout town. There was actually 10 on the agenda, if you tuned in. One of them, there were some title discrepancies, so we wanted to err on the side of caution, so the board did not take action on that property. These pictures are representative of the structures, one being commercial there on the left on Bolton and one on the right of a residential structure. But nine in total were issued demolition orders. The next step in this is to wait 30 days, and then the city will start the bidding process. In fact, we'll start that very soon, but we'll start the bidding process or estimate process on the demolition of these nine structures, and we'll pay to have them demolished, removed, and place liens on the property. So this is something that we're going to see probably some more of, I would say, in the near future. We didn't, certainly didn't chew through the whole backlog at one meeting, but it was important to start somewhere. I do want to thank Brett Brewer, Chris Sylvie, and the zoning board of adjustment. There is a lot of due diligence that goes into these. This is people's property, and so we want to make sure we handle that with white gloves and, but certainly, you know, we got to take a firm stand against this as well. I do want to call everyone's attention to some grants. Grants continually are something we talk about. We love to bring money into the city. We love to leverage the taxpayers' money. This is just a snapshot of some grants totaling almost $2 million that we've received in the last probably 12 to 24 months. Many of the projects haven't even started construction, but we have the boating access grant at the lake. We have Buckner Park Playground Grant, Downtown Sidewalk Project Grant. Obviously, that's under construction. Want to thank JEDCO for funding the city's match and just managing downtown shop local programs and really the construction. Lake Acker Planning Grant, which was approved this evening. Bolton Street Sewer Line Assistance, that's a low-interest loan, but $5 million of assistance we're going to get there. We had a generator grant at the new public safety complex. We had some body armor and museum relief grants. So really, grants are impacting all of our departments throughout town. We don't have a dedicated grant writer on staff, so your department directors and your finance team manage these and write these and seek these out, and I'm really proud of bringing almost, the full total's well over $2 million, but this is some of the ones we've really worked for, and we look forward to taking steps toward implementing. Do want to call everyone's attention to the May 7 election. There'll be one proposition on the ballot for the city, and that is for voters to have